We'll call the meeting to order in accordance with the South Carolina Freedom of Information Act, Section 30 S-4, D-80 E, South Carolina Code 1987 as amended. All the media in the media area have been notified of the date, time, location, and agenda of the meeting. We'll have our prayer run, Mr. Goode, and then followed by the replay from Mr. Reed.
Just by head. Father, it is again that we come to say thank you, God. We thank you for this season of the year. We ask God that we will remember the reason for this season, and that we would do what is in the best interest of you and your desires if we conduct this board meeting. We ask that you will provide safe travels as we leave this place. We turn to our respect for home. This we ask in your name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I get a motion to approve the agenda?
Go ahead.
Okay, second.
One second.
All in favor? And we have some citizens' comments tonight. Let me just read this portion for that. The first 30 minutes of the monthly meeting will be set aside for three-minute input sessions for citizen participation. Public input should be in the form of suggestions, information, or comments pertaining to programs, schools, or the school district. Based on legal advice of our council, comments should not be made either complimentary or critical, naming any student, school employee, administrator, or board member, as these are matters or personnel matters that require an executive session. Speakers' comments will be received only as board information. Our first speaker tonight is Ms. Michelle Anderson.
I don't know if this is something that I can talk about, but our bosses told us that you guys were the final say in it. I just wanted to know, I'm a crossing guard. I just wanted to know why our learning pay was taken away and why we're getting denied raises. We're not, we're not making, we can't even buy groceries on what we're making. And our bosses are saying it's school work, so that's why I came to ask.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Next, we have Ms. Jessica Hoffman.
I'm also a school crossing guard to work with my mother. This is about safety in the school zones. At least where we work, we work out on South Governor Highway. It is a very busy intersection, but I would like to talk about maybe lengthening the school zone because it is so short and with semis coming through there, hitting the school zone sign and then trying to slow down for the intersection, they can't do it. The length is too short. There's no crosswalk since we've gotten the road fixed. There's no street light, so it's absolutely, totally pitch black in the mornings. And we have to walk kids across that road in the absolute pitch dark. It's a safety concern, not only for us, but for the children.
What school, I'm sorry, I didn't catch what school this was.
We're at Brockington.
Brockington, okay.
And we're out on the highway.
Okay.
So, I mean, and my husband's a truck driver, so he knows he's going through millions of school zones. And he says, by far, ours is the shortest. People, especially semis loaded, cannot slow down in that short amount of time. It needs to be lengthened, but it also is a safety concern because of the speeders, because there's no crosswalk, and because there's absolutely no lights out there. Thank you.
I'm going to have Ms. Dorabakis.
Good afternoon. How was your last time we had a meeting? I'm concerned about Rosemore High School. And I got in touch with Mr. Monroe, or whatever his name is. He said he paid $1,800 for it. But I went to the clerk of code where he paid the dues, he paid only $200 for it. It is now a historical school that was given to us. We would like your help in getting it back. Yes, Rosemore High School was given to African-American students in 1930 by a billionaire Julius Rosemore. And Mr. Mayo, I think his name is, Mike Ray, Murray. He wants to say he paid $1,800 for it, but the court said he paid $500 for it. Well, we need your help to get it back so we can restore it to what it should be. I went to the Freshwater Moon High School and I graduated from that high school. And it's the only African-American historical school in this area. And one more thing I want to say is that I know you're closing the school in Society Hill, but have you consider that the students that you have and the academics and the capabilities that they have, they will have a bad chance. If you turn that school into a second school for people who can learn better, yet Mayo is a, make that into a junior school like Mayo, instead of closing it. Ask the state for more money to keep it going. Some kids will never get into Mayo, but they may get into Society Hill. School, because everyone, then I have another idea, and I will let you go. Everyone does not, don't want to go to college, should not go to college, so you can not get a learning school. There's so much can be done for without just sitting there after all the money you've put into it, or just sit there and waste. I understand that Society Hill is not producing any money, but one tax, one penny, and students that will learn something from it will help a whole lot and help the neighborhood and the community. Thank you. And I would like to know what you can do to get Rosemore back for us. If he paid $5, we want to pay $5. Thank you.
All right, now move on to our consent items. We have our minutes to the record board. If I can get a motion for our minutes, approval of minutes.
Yeah, yeah, we'll be approving the minutes.
Do I have a second? All in favor, anybody opposed? And we have our adult education admissions. Need a motion to approve?
We have a job move, we all accept.
And a second? All in favor? Anybody want to pose? Now we'll move on to our adult, our honors awards and recognitions.
So our first recognitions are for two athletic recognitions.
Good evening, everyone. Good evening, everyone. I have the privilege and honor to recognize two of distinguished student athletes for Darlington County School District. When I call your name, I'm going to ask that you come up to take a picture with our board chair and superintendent. The first individual is a student athlete, 11th grader at Mayo High School. Principal, Ms. Stephanie Lennar. She runs cross-country for Darlington High School, Principal, Ms. Courtney Gerkey. This year she was selected as the 2023-38 All-State Girls Cross-Country Team Member. She was also selected as All-Region and Region Runner. I present to you, Ms. Alexis Allen. And Coach Johnson, and Coach for the Cross-Country Team.
Right here on three. One, two, three. We'll take one more, again on three. One, two, three. Mom, you need one? Anybody else? Family? Friends? All right. Family, friends.
Our next student athlete is a senior at Darlington High School, Principal, Ms. Courtney Gerkey. This individual was selected as the 2023-38 All-State Volleyball Team Member. She was also selected as a North-South All-Star, in which they played a volleyball game in November. In addition, she was recognized as All-Region and Region Player of the Year. Ladies and gentlemen, I present to you, Ms. Caitlin Carpenter. And Coach Williams and your coach, Coach Free.
Looking here on three. One, two, three. We'll do a second, again on three. One, two, three. Anybody else?
Mom, you want to take a picture?
We can freeze. You know the drill, on three. One, two, three. Well, let's do it one more time. One, two, three. Then we have another recognition.
All right, our final student recognition today is for the holiday card contest. We have an annual holiday card contest in which students submit holiday artwork to serve as the cover of our district holiday card. This year's winner is Karis Wells, a fifth-grade student of J.L. Kane Elementary School, where principal is Dr. Stephanie Bridges. She's the winner of our 2023 holiday contest. It's Karis here, she would please come forward. Karis has a drawing that features one particularly happy red-nosed reindeer in a winter scene. And this will be the front of the cover of our district's card. Karis will receive a certificate for $50 and a packet of her cards for distribution. And her teacher, Mr. Timothy Green, will receive $100 for art supplies for his classes. Ladies and gentlemen, it's Karis Wells.
Right here on three. One, two, three. Go again. One, two, three.
Give them a moment to clear out. Okay, the next regular dog campus school board of education meeting is scheduled for January the 8th, 2024, at 6:00 PM here in the training room. We're at our audit.
Hey, Jim. Just the same.
Oh, barely. All right, so let's get us some sound here. It's not muted on the computer, is it? Drag that top one all the way to the left. Hope that we have the right speakers. Can you hear us? Sir?
I can hear you.
There we go.
Can you hear me? Yes.
Speak well now. You just need a mic.
I can see everybody.
Okay, Webster Rogers, I'm not going to try to say your last name.
Chelphy.
Chelphy, okay, all right. This is Jimmy Chelphy, who was the lead auditor for our audit this year, financial audit that you all got, board docs, and I think he's got a PowerPoint presentation. He was going to go through the highlights and then if you have any questions, I'll field some questions.
Jimmy, do you need to share a screen for you?
I can share my screen with the meeting. You gotta enable it.
Share screen. Security. Does he need to share case?
Yeah, he's just got to enable it.
Do you have rights now, sir?
It's the, yes, let's look at you. Am I good to start?
Yeah, I don't see. We don't see your screen.
We don't see your screen yet.
There we go.
There we go, it's coming. There you go.
Okay. All right, so like Renee said, my name's Jimmy Chelphy. I was the lead auditor this year for the year ended June 30th, 2023. First, I'll go over some financial highlights for the year. Then I'll do an executive summary of the results of the audit. Then we'll talk about internal control over financial reporting. And lastly, the single audit results. So financial highlights. The district ended the year with an unassigned general fund balance of $30,736,932 at June 30th. During the course of the year, that change in general fund balance was a decrease of 9.4 million. Actual general fund revenues exceeded budgeted amounts by 2.8 million, while actual expenditures exceeded budgeted amounts by 2.4. And the total overage for the expenditures is attributed to board-approved holiday retention bonuses that were paid but not budgeted for. More detailed information for the general fund budget to actual can be found on page 67 of the financial statement. And more in-depth analysis of the year-over-year activity can be found in the management discussion analysis that starts on page four of the statement, so you can review that in your own time. Next, I'll talk about the results of the audit. So as of today, we have substantially completed our audit for the year ended June 30th, 2023. We have performed our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America. The objective of our audit was to obtain reasonable assurance about the financial statements and whether they are free from material misstatements. And the scope of our audit did not change substantially from the initial planning communications that we provided to the district, which basically means that during our audit, there weren't any surprises that came up and we didn't have to change our audit plan during our testing. And we're pleased to report, as a result of the audit, we have provided the district with an unmodified opinion, which is basically the best opinion that we can provide to you guys is what you're looking forward to get out of this audit. So that's good news. And all records and information that we requested was freely available and provided to us when requested. Going forward, accounting practices, policies, and estimates. The district's significant accounting policies are presented in the notes to the financial statements in Note 1. We also have a summary of recently issued accounting pronouncements that's included in Note 3 H to the statements. The most significant new accounting standard that was applicable this year for the district was GASB number 96, which related to subscription-based information technology arrangements. The district performed a determination of this pronouncement as of July 1st, 2022, and June 30th, 2023, and determined that it did not have a material impact on the statements, so there was no subscription-based information technology arrangements that were arrangements that were recorded in the financial statements. We are also required to communicate to you the significant accounting estimates that are included in the financial statements. Those that require management's most difficult subjective or complex judgments and require estimates to be made, those included the estimate for the loss for doubtful accounts, depreciation expense, liabilities for pension, and other post-employment benefits, as well as deferred tax revenues. Corrected and uncorrected misstatements, so we are also pleased to report that as a result of our audit, we did not report any corrected misstatements or have any uncorrected misstatements that we presented to management. Discussion over internal control over financial reporting. As part of our audit, we are required to consider the design and effectiveness of internal control. And if there are any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses, we are required to report those in writing to the board. The definitions of what those are are on this slide. However, we did not have any to report. This slide is just a disclosure about independence. We communicated in our engagement letter that professional standards require us as auditors to be independent, and the district also has responsibilities with respect to independence. All right, lastly, for the single audit, which is the testing of grants, federal grants. We tested two major programs this year as part of the single audit. They were the child nutrition program, so we tested the national school breakfast, school lunch, and fresh fruit and vegetable programs. And we also tested the COVID funds through S R two, S R three, and the A R P homeless. As a result of our single audit procedures, we did not have any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies. And we had an unmodified opinion with respect to compliance over major programs. All right, so that's all I had to report. I'd also just like to thank Renee and Margaret for making this a very seamless process this year. We, we got through it pretty well, and if anybody has any questions, just let me know.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board? And if you all would like a bound copy, just let us know. Of course, you've got an electronic copy of ninety-plus pages, but if you all want your own book, we certainly can provide that. And Jimmy, I'd like to thank you. I appreciate you all's efforts and collaboration with us this year. We started off meetings early. That helped a lot. And just for the board's knowledge, we did complete the audit by December first, uh, which is the date it was due to the State Department, so we hit that metric this, this time, which was really good. And again, Renee, to you and your staff, job well done. It's a lot of work to get to this point, especially with all the S R and everything else.
We appreciate you guys, too. Y'all, they worked. We had this year.
Yep, looking forward to working on it again.
Can we wait a few months before we do that?
Please, yeah.
Okay, that'd be good. Just, that would be my preference, so, all right.
All right. Thank you, Jamie. Appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Have a good one.
One question that I had, I meant, that I mentioned to Dr. Newman, is really about the report, but just in general, that we were presented with that education funding dashboard at the last School Board Association convention. And I was just curious, like, he said there were some concerns, you know, it's new, and I was curious how that aligned with everything that you're seeing, Will.
I'm still analyzing the dashboard. The numbers that they sent, I think they were required to publish something, and they pulled numbers from twenty twenty-one, and then they changed them to twenty-one, twenty-two, and there's actually some now that are twenty-two, twenty-three. It's, I have not tied, been able to tie back the numbers that they're reporting back to our audit report, but I did, I, I have started working. I mean, I'm trying to, so as soon as I crack the code, I will share the information. I was able to tie back the federal funds, and somewhere along the line, they're off, because what they report is our revenue is well above what is reported in our audit report. And, but I'm not alone. Everybody that I spoke to at the last two conferences I went to, and I talked to a couple people today, said they were trying to get the audit behind them before they go in. We actually got an email saying, we've put the dashboard out there. When you get time, please go through the numbers. We will be allowing you to change, you know, we will be editing them going forward. So we send them a full schedule of every number that's in this book. That's what we have to file by December first, and Maggie painstakingly ties every number, so that's what I pulled for last year, and I'm trying to tie it back to their numbers so I can tell what the differences are.
I was just curious whether we, how much we should trust it yet. It sounded to me like, from what they were presenting, they even said this is version one point oh, and they knew there were some things that still needed to be worked out, and they, they still needed to add some additional data. I mean, they gave us caution in looking at it, but it is published out there on the internet for anybody to look at, so I was curious for what your take was on it.
Yeah, it's, it's.
It's a work in progress.
It is not accurate. I, I can, I can look at it just, you know, but we'll figure out what it is ours so that we can get them to correct it.
I think it'll be a great tool eventually, maybe, you know, because it did have some really, some cool, it, it looked like it had potential to be able to, like, look at things across the state and compare, you know, other places and really sort of, but yeah, I was excited about the accuracy of the data.
They should be able to pull the data accurately. I think some of the transfers between funds have gotten duplicated. That's what one of my peers said that he was looking at, and that appears to be, because I was about eight million dollars off, which is a lot. But I did, this afternoon, I actually came up with a method to tie their numbers down, so once I get to the end of that, I'll, I'll know what the differences are, and then we can share that information with them. I think it's a work in progress.
Okay, thank you.
All right, and we'll move on to our strategic plan focus area.
Chair Hasler, members of the board, and members of our audience, again, want to stay focused on, first of all, our mission statement, which is educate, empower, and prepare all for an ever-changing world, and then our four goal areas for the strategic plan, and just a few examples of those. Student success, adult education, they've added an assessment wall at each of the sites, and when students make measurable skill gains, they, or pass a GED subtest, they are acknowledged on their assessment wall. Donington County Institute of Technology, Mr. Smith was talking about that the DECA members attended a regional competition last week, and one student finished in the top eight in her event, and will compete at a statewide competition later this year. We also have Donington High School, S I C Committee came up with some ideas and have reached out to some teachers to make plans for some extra math and science sessions to help Algebra One and Biology E O C plans. Donington Middle's got their junior beta club induction, had eighty-seven students, and they also had their Alex, which is their math program, and Exact Path, which is their E L A program. They had a dance for those folks that did well on those, too, so positive rewards. Lamar High School had the Silver Powerhouse Band place in a battle of the bands. They were second place in one A in the music category. Of course, they were Region Six football champions, and they celebrated their pre-ACT scores with students who met grade-level benchmarks. Lamar Spalding Elementary School had their Energy Bus Drivers of the Month, recognized for being the driver of their own bus, which is, they set their, setting their goals and working towards them. North Hartsville Elementary School had their November Read, Write, and Soar Monthly Reading Challenge, which involved Hartsville High School students coming over, athletes, cheerleaders, and band members to meet and greet and stay, and help celebrate with the North Hartsville students in a celebration of their academic achievements. Rosenwald Elementary had students write poems for American Education Week and read them at their All-Star Parents Ceremony. And St. John's had their Beta Club Induction as well. With Staff Excellence, we had the D C I S had staff enjoy, staff breakfast as well as Thanksgiving meal from Holt's Barbecue. We have the Donington Middle Swap Administr, Swap, which is administrators and teachers for class period swap places. J.L. Kane has a book study. Their, their Book of the Month is called One, and they've been using that for reflections during meetings and P L Cs. Southside has faculty and staff participating in a Thanksgiving bingo, where they were able to eat refreshments and play bingo in fellowship with each other, but also celebrate the educational support professionals as well. And then Spalding Middle School staff enhanced cultural diversity by offering authentic dishes from the different teachers in the building and their different nationalities. Community engagement, we had a lot of veterans programs that were listed. Bay Road had three hundred and sixty-one families that enjoyed Thanksgiving lunch. Carolina had their annual parent picnic that was held on November third, where parents were invited to enjoy picnic lunch with their child. D C I, the Virtual Academy, had scholars and staff supported the Clemson, Carolina Thanksgiving Box Challenge, creating Thanksgiving dinner boxes for families. Hartsville High hosted its annual blood drive, which has consistently been one of the largest in the state. There was a really good article in the paper about that a couple weeks ago. Hartsville Middle School has their Winter Family Night that included an art gallery walk, dance performances, scavenger hunts, and academic team challenges. Rosenwald Elementary hosted a Fall Festival Family Night and hosted Saturday Alumni Reunion Breakfast. And St. John's had Veterans Day muffins for our military, where parents and grandparents and their students had pastries, muffins, juices. Students all over the school made banners and cards and wrote thank you notes to the veterans. And resources, we had Care South that actually came to Bay Road for eight days for onsite dental exams. We had Carolina that, that used some of the money through their fundraising efforts to purchase new risers for the school performances. And Lamar Spalding is using Title One funds for family drop-ins and providing site word flashcards for every four K and five K student. And that is just a brief example of the strategic plan goal areas.
I'm gonna leave it with you as we move on to, or if you have any questions for any of those areas. Move it on to their State Department underperforming school plan.
Chair Hasler, members of the board, and members of our audience, this is a update to something new that has taken place in the school, in school districts this year from the State Department, in acknowledging underperforming schools as well as plans that have to be passed by the board for that. And so I'm gonna have, our, our two schools that are designated as underperforming are Thornwell Elementary School as well as Rosenwald Elementary School. And I have our principals here with us tonight, Ms. Mason and Ms. Keels. If you all would just come up to the podium for a second. And I'll describe a little bit about what this process is. We'll bring the plan to the board to pass at the January meeting, but this is just an explanation of what this is, because it is a new process of what's going on. And so Code of Law requires the department to formally notify district superintendents, local school board, and local delegation of a school or district status is underperforming. Underperforming school is defined as a school receiving an overall school report card rating of below average or unsatisfactory. That's what's new. It was just unsatisfactory in the past, and now they've included below average, which has really swept a whole lot more schools across the state into this category. Below average.
So they wouldn't have been last year?
Just one of them. Yeah, yeah. So one actually moved up to underperforming Thornwell did. But every district across the state is pretty much having to do this now that has at least one below-average school, which is the majority of school districts across the state. And so for that, the schools with an underperforming rating, the district, local Board of Trustees and school principals are responsible for notifying parents about this particular rating. The district is required to consult with school and community stakeholders to review and revise the school and district's strategic plans with the assistance of School Improvement Council to include a turnaround component, turnaround plan component. Turnaround plan must include input from the community, and it must be approved by the local school board, and then submitted to the State Department Office of School Transformation for approval by the fifteenth of January. So we'll have a, a board meeting on the eighth, where we'll actually bring the completed plans. And again, the, the primary requirements are that the, there are meetings that have to take place. There's actually a pretty in-depth rubric that is called a continuous improvement criteria plan and rubric, and so it starts off with the personnel and the buildings. It then includes folks from the district office, but then also the school improvement councils and the public. So I have Ms. Mason and Ms. Keels just to talk a little bit about what they've done so far in this process and, and how they're gonna get us to the eighth. So, Ms. Mason, we'll start with you.
Certainly. Good evening. We, at Rosenwald, we started the process by having our leadership team come together and walk through this rubric. It's called the Continuous Improvement Rubric, and like Dr. Newman said, it's a fairly comprehensive rubric. I think a lot of things about it, but I think the most important thing for you all to understand is that it gives us the opportunity to reflect on what we have done, where we were last year, where we are at this point in the school year, and just have some honest conversations about, you know, even areas of equity and resources. For our school, it had to do with whether or not every single child in the building was paired with teachers who really could diagnose what their concerns were, what their needs were. Call it, we called it like a root cause analysis and get down to the nitty-gritty so that they could offer the right kinds of strategies for the children to improve. And so, and then the other thing that we've done is we revamped our P L C process and the P D schedule that we had originally put together, because what we recognized was that we all, as school leaders, had decided that, you know, just looking at the data, that there were certain areas that we needed to work on. But as we went a little bit further and we were more inclusive in the conversation, including the school district, including other leaders, including teachers at our school, then we've written, what we realized really is that, you know, we needed to have better conversations and with our teachers. And so it's easy to look at a set of data as a school leader and then just begin to make some decisions, but with the teachers who are right there in front of the children and right there understanding what mistakes may have been made, it just, it just makes for stronger school and stronger leadership. And so when you get our plan, what you're gonna look for is that we're focused in on what the teachers need and what the students need. And to me, it's not a very fancy plan. It just talks, real talk about what's going on in our building, and perhaps what we haven't done as well as we would like to. Now, the, the public, the School Improvement Council, they all have been included in this. I took the sample letter from the State Department, this department. I took the sample letter from the State Department, this department at the State Department level, and just, you know, wrote it with my own heart and with the facts for Rosenwald and sent that to all of my parents as we've engaged with them in awards assemblies and other events where parents are. And I just speak with them very candidly about where we are. For us, it had to do with ensuring that we were moving children along at the proper rate for improvement, okay? And so, and there are other things if you have questions.
Just I said, I don't mean to put you on the spot if you can't come up with an example right now. It's okay, it's okay. But when you say that you're really looking at exactly what the teachers need and what the students need, like what would be an example of something a teacher told you that that's what they really needed?
Well, one of the things that our teachers have said, and Dr. Newman, he's only read the plan maybe, or, you know, just listened to some of my rhetoric, but, you know, the teacher said, well, we were throwing a lot of things at them. For example, they were having to upload all of their pacing guides. Those are, to me, pretty standard things. But when we got together in the PLC, instead of just uploading numbers and writing new goals and having to come back in two weeks with results from that, you see what I'm saying? Then perhaps they didn't have all the tools that they needed. And so we're looking at resources. We have one set in the building, for example, math in practice. And so the new math recovery program is actually using this, all the math interventions have it. So for our teachers, they're saying, well, we've got, you know, our go-to strategies, but maybe we don't have enough strategies, and we need more time to talk through this and really understand what it is. And you can imagine, you know, when you're, at our school where you have one class per grade, there is just such a wide range of abilities and needs for the children. And so the teachers just have to be more proficient than we ever have been to move us that much further up the road. And so, is, does that answer your question? Strategy, I think strategies was a big piece of it. And so, but you know what? Teachers don't want to be wrong. Teachers want to please their principals for close part. They want the board, the superintendent, to be proud of them for their work and their accomplishments. But what happens sometimes is you get to a level, especially at Rosenwald, where we've always had, you know, progress. We were making progress, but our snare was we couldn't make achievement. And so now we've got pretty decent achievement, but we failed to make the necessary progress that was expected of, you know, under the report card calculations. It's a new ballgame for us, you know? But we're going through it as an interim process, which means there's lots of meetings. And so you're getting ideas from you. You guys are welcome to come out if you'd like, you know, and just talk with us, talk with the teachers, talk with the students. I talk to the students, and sometimes, you know, when you really get them relaxed, they will tell you exactly what they're having struggles with. And so, and from there, we'll continue on, you know, with the process with the support of the school district leaders, and of course, we have the support of our community members and parents. So, thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Keels?
Okay.
Talk a little bit about Thornwell and the process.
Sure. How are y'all? I'm Casey Keels, principal at Thornwell. This process, I think, couldn't have happened at a better time for me coming into the building from the district because, you know, at district level, you know, I had an idea of, you know, where I thought the improvements were because of learning rounds and participating and trying to support the school before. But this process has been very thorough. It has given me a lot of information. Just like Dr. Newman and Ms. Mason have said, we did have the Continuous Improvement Rubric that we had to complete. After we completed that, we had to collect data because we had Cognia come in. And Cognia came in to review all of the data that we, you know, presented to them. I had to present a principal overview based on what I have learned about the school and the needs, you know, while I was there. After, you know, we had that process, Cognia came in and they interviewed, hang on one second, because I just had my debrief of them last week.
Could you tell us what Cognia is?
Yes.
That's a, we're not familiar with that one.
Um, Cognia is part of the
Priority School process.
Yes, and they come in and they basically do learning rounds from an outside perspective. They collect data according to standards for improvement. It's tied to the Elliott with standards for engagement, and they look for best practices whenever they come in, from community to culture, students, their feedback and performance and what's going on in the classroom.
And that's unique to Thornwell because they're a priority school, right? Because they, remember, they were priority, they were unsatisfactory in the past. So part of that requirement of the improvement process is going through Cognia. The district is actually going through Cognia this year as well for all of our schools. And unfortunately, for Ms. Keels, she didn't get the benefit of just doing it for the rest of the district. She had to do it as well early. The district will be going through the same process that we're in the middle of it right now, and we'll finalize it sometime in the springtime. But that is unique to a priority school, so.
So they came in and they conducted 79 interviews. They interviewed staff, they interviewed myself, leadership team, all of the staff, not just teachers. They also interviewed students, parents, and community members. So they did 79 interviews. They observed 11 students in 11 classroom environments. They spent approximately 40 hours reviewing the information and the data that we provided for them, but also the, the data that they pulled from surveys, student performance, and then they deliberated, or, yes, they met and had the discussions to identify strengths and possibilities for growth. So based on what they said, I was able to use our strengths and opportunities for growth to help me with our strategic plan and our continuous improvement plan, too. And that was, that was very helpful, you know, because like I said, I had ideas of what I was thinking and other members of our, you know, school, but it was nice to have an outside set of eyes to come in and also, you know, share that information, too. So then after, you know, I've had that meeting with Cognia, using their information, and I started working with my transformation coach today to write the goals and plans for our improvement. But we have, because like Dr. Newman said, we do have, you know, days that we have to meet with School Improvement Council, larger, you know, populations of parents. So I have those dates coming up, but I'll be able to share that before, you know, we presented the all the board meeting.
Did, did, would Cognia identify a different grade from what you had kind of observed in
Yeah. No, it was, it was very much similar to what I shared in my principal overview. But I will say, if you don't mind if I share a strength, they were very much, our area of strength was that we are growing positive relationships between students and staff, that students, students are very respectful in the interactions with teachers and each other. And the students exhibited that they have supportive relationships with their teachers, but also another area for strength for our relationships and our culture within the building. I've got it on another one, I'm sorry. Hang on one second. They just couldn't get over how inviting and warm Thornwell was. They enjoyed being there. They said that the culture was welcoming and a nurturing learning environment that is responsive to students' needs, family oriented, and it had a collaborative atmosphere for staff. Parents praised communication and support received from the staff members and the school. So we had a lot of really good feedback from the community and parents.
And I, I think it's really important to point that out for both of our, not only just for Thornwell, but, you know, this is, you know, I was, I've had a conversation with both of you all, and you're like, we really don't want to have to be up in front of the board talking about this. But the reality is, there's, there's good things that are going on in the building, and it's just having to fine tune. Both of these buildings are small, and so just a few students impact the scores greatly. So, you know, I, I'm confident that both of them, you know, have the right plan in place, will have the right plan in place for the board by the 8th of January. But it was important for you all to hear the process because this is new. We, you know, again, we haven't had to do this before. So when it comes to you in January, you, you won't be like, well, what exactly is this? Or what, you know, it'll be the formative plan for both buildings that you all will approve on the 8th.
Thank you all so much for your
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Budget reports and federal funds report. Anybody have any questions?
When will we see something about, I have to ask it every time now, when will we see something about S.R., like what we're thinking going forward as that money dries up?
Yes, I think, you know, after the first of the year, you know, those, that'll be in-depth work session conversations. So, you know, I think if you're asking about what happens next year.
And when do we start that conversation? That'll be right after the new year?
Absolutely, right after the new year.
So we'll have time to sort of digest the options and
I think the, you know, the board's been very clear that the sooner the better that we can start planning. And, you know, we've been having lots of conversations with our principals over the past couple of months as well about that, so. But yeah, after the first
I have faith you guys are talking about it. I'm just curious when we'll hear something. I know it's, it's gonna be a tough conversation, so we just want to have plenty of time to talk about that. Thank you.
Okay, we got policy items. We've got three for second reading. We have Gavin Swall for staff, Gavin Swall for students, and then our use of ethanol injectors. You want to take them together, or do we just like pull them all together?
Madam Chair, I'd suggest we take them together.
Okay. Can I get a motion?
I move that we, that we accept A, B, and C for second reading.
Madam Chair, I'll say.
Second. On my favor, they are opposed. So all three of those have passed. Dr. Newman, we're back to you for an update.
All right, well, just a couple of items. We are wrapping up our end-of-course testing and MAP testing this week. So first semester is officially over as of Friday, and so we're excited about all of our students being done with exams before they go out on break. When we come back, of course, we have a PD day on January 2nd, which will be time for our high schools to be able to flip over schedules and to be able to get set for second semester. But again, MAP testing as well as wrapping up towards the end of this week, and we have some makeups that are going on at this point in time. And let's see. While I am looking at Ms. Gardner for just a second, y'all had some very large wrapping, you have a lot of things on your desk, but one of them is incredibly large with a big bow on it. And so, of course, Charlene Gardner is our Support Staff Employee of the Year, and she wanted to come by early instead of waiting until January for board appreciation. She asked if Donington Middle School could beat everybody to the punch. And I told her, I said, you know, it's Christmas. If y'all want to come over and do that, that's fine. It's the holiday. So, thank you, Ms. Gardner and Donington Middle School. Also, we have pinned down our hiring event. Our, our district hiring event will be February 10th at Mayo, and that's where we will be hiring for all positions, bus driver, food service, you know, teachers, teach, administration, everybody. So we will be promoting that greatly over the next few months and hope to get as good of a turnout as we had, if not better than last year.
Is this the same kind of year we had last year?
We're actually backing up a little bit earlier.
February what, the 10th?
The 10th? So that was the one, when we asked, when we surveyed everybody, and Mr. Miller, I'll, I'll refer to you on this, that when we surveyed, that they wanted to start a little bit earlier to see if we can get folks.
That's correct. So we're about, about a month earlier than we did last time.
And also, we have, one of our student athletes was recognized by the South Carolina High School League as Student Athlete of the Month for November. And so when I was looking at, we get these weekly updates from the High School League, and lo and behold, Alexis Jepson, who swims for Hartsville High School, was named the state South Carolina High School League Student Athlete of the Month for November. So congrats to Ms. Jepson. I'm sure we're gonna be finding other ways to, to highlight her, but that's what, that's the way it came across, so I thought that was great. I noticed when we were looking at the agendas for last year to get ready for this year, one of the things that was on there was for the sick leave bank. We actually passed that last year. And so kind of looking at the numbers a year later, we actually have almost 400 of our employees that participate in the sick leave bank, and there are several instances recently where employees have been able to get up to 30 days leave because of the sick leave bank. So again, I think a year ago, you kind of look back in time and say, okay, where are we today? It is good to see that, that we have folks that are participating and that it is benefiting some folks that need to use that. And the last item on my list, of course, is that this is the last board meeting before the holidays. And so, of course, I want to be able to tell everybody, all of our employees in the, in the district, all of our families and students, Donington County School District family, just happy holidays, have a safe, restful, joyful, blessed holidays. And that's the superintendent's update.
Thank you, Dr. Newman. And that will lead us to our board member input. Gore, you want to start us out tonight?
Well, I'm glad to be back with you all tonight. I've missed some of you all. I've been sick, but I'm feeling much better, and I'm glad to be back with the board. I want to thank all the young people that got recognized tonight in their sports and, and, and the card from Ms. Wells, from J.O. King, and Ms. Caitlin Carter, and the other young lady from Donington High, I can't remember her name, but I, I'm honored to have such athletic women in our schools. And I want to give a shout out to Lamar Silver Foxes. They made it to the playoffs, but I was real disappointed when they got beat by Johnsonville, but they were a very good football team. And Donington High School also was in the playoffs, and we thank them for their hard-fought season this year because they have improved and came from a long ways. So I thank the athletic directors of both schools. And, let me see, I, I had a good time the other, last week at the administrative banquet. I mean, it was so very nice and, oh, I mean Chuck, I, if I had a Emmy, I would give it to Chuck because he really had, we had a really good time. You never knew what talent people carry, but he, but thank you. I really, I had a very nice time and a very nice time socializing with the administrative staff that do so, so well, and I appreciate what they do for this school. And I thank them for allowing me to be there with them. And for tonight, Ms. Renee, you're quiet in that corner, but you're very powerful. Thank you for that audit that was done, and I appreciate you working with Webster Rogers, very prestigious firm, that you, y'all did a very good job, you and your staff. Thank you for what you do for this district. I thank Dr. Newman for another year with us. I wasn't here, but I thank you for being with us another year. You're doing great things for the Donington County School District. We have more to do. We have more to do. I, Ms. Keels, I look at what you are doing over there at Thornwell. I'm glad that you're getting children, the children there, being respectful to their teachers. That was a great accomplishment for that to take place and for the community to start working with the school and making it better. I want to thank Ms. Brown over there at DCIS because she is doing I want to thank Ms. Miss Brown over there, D C I S, because she is doing a great job over there, those kids. I went to, I've been over there a lot because you're close to my house, that's why. I might check in on y'all, no, it's, thank you. But I just, I just come to see you, see you because I know what has taken place and the, and the kids have gotten back normal and things are going well. And I, um, Ms. Leonard, I thank you for what you do for, um, Mayo Magnet School. I talked to a lot of the children that go there because I know them and, and they really love you as their principal and they always speak very highly of you. So I'm thanking all the principals who are here tonight for what they do for the Donington County School District. You all are making some good children and, and adults that's gonna take all of our places one day. So I appreciate everything you all do for this school district. Um, thank you, I can't remember your name, for this basket.
Ms. Gardner.
Ms. Gardner. Thank you, Ms. Gardner. Thank you, thank you. It is so beautiful. I mean, I came in here and saw all these gifts. I said, wow, wow, we got a lot of gifts this year. But this is my first time, so I'm real excited about my gifts. As soon as I get home, I'm gonna put them on the, around the tree. Thank you so much for thanking up the school board. Thank you so much. I, I, this was my, well, I said my first year. I had a good time, I had a great time. I'm learning a lot of things and I'm learning a lot of different personalities, but as a whole, I would say that you all are some great people. I can go down, all the way down for Ms. Renee, Ms. Ms. King, all of y'all, y'all are just great people. Mr. Brown, I worry about my computer every time he sees me. So Mr. Brown, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Shu. I can't, I know your name, but I'm gonna just say communication man. Well, you all are some great people and I know we're gonna continue to do great things for this school district. We have a great leader and we have a great chairman of the board, so we can't do nothing but go up. And we're gonna, and we already were number six in the, number eight in Carolina, in the state, right?
Yep.
Oh, that's gonna, oh, we probably beat about number four or five pretty soon.
Career of college red.
That's right.
Career of college red.
That's right. That's right. That's right. And I appreciate you all and I hope you all have a beautiful Christmas and a lovely time with your families and I'm gonna try to have a good one in mind. I'm gonna cook again. I cooked Thanksgiving and they survived, so I believe I cooked Christmas. They'll survive. So you all have very happy holidays and enjoy your family.
All of you, bless us all.
Now you see why, why she said you do that side first.
She's a hard act to follow.
I know.
All right, Mr. Reed, you up?
Oh, all right, congratulations to all of our award recipients tonight. Um, again, yeah, thank you for, want to forget baskets. Um, to our young artist who won the card contest, you, great job. You keep it up, even though I believe he's already left out. Um, let's see, uh, Mr. Corey Lewis isn't here tonight, but I would like to say congratulations to him for winning regional six. Um, for, yeah, four A, Principal of the Year. Um, yeah, congratulations to him. Um, yeah, all of our staff members, all of our students, families that are watching. Yeah, with the holiday season coming up, you stay safe, remember what the season's about. Yeah, and a few of our principals in here tonight, um, don't be surprised if Thursday and Friday, you don't get to see a little bit of holiday joy and excitement showing up to your schools. I know there's a few of you that already know about it. Um, Ms. Mason, you, I'll fill you in here in a little while. Um, but other than that, yeah, that's it.
Ms. Kelly?
I, I do have a couple of other things to say, but real quick before I did, I, do, do we employ the crossing guards for the, for the district?
We do not.
We do not? Okay.
They're employed by the law enforcement agencies across the counties.
I just want to make sure I understood that. Okay, um, I don't have to repeat because, I mean, she just puts it all out there and you can make us follow her. But, um, thank you for all the, the gifts. Um, thank you for Renee for continuing to handle our finances with integrity. I mean, it's just kind of the expectation now that we get a clean and good audit that you're about to handle, so thank you for that. Happy holidays to everybody. Um, and congratulations to our students, of course, that were recognized tonight.
Mr. Morpheus?
Oh, ditto, Ms. Gore. Good.
Yeah. You know, I can't decide if she's a preacher or a politician or both. I'm not.
Yeah, that's right. The best, the best of both.
All right, you up?
I'm good. I'm good.
I, I don't have a lot to add either because I just echo all their sentiments. Um, and just, uh, this is my first year also, wrapping up the first year as a school board member. Thought, uh, maybe I'm a little crazy to be here, but it's been a, a great journey. I've learned a tremendous amount. Thank you to everyone's patience with all of my questions and figuring it all out. And I'll probably never figure it all out, but I'm learning. Um, I just want to be here to support you and please, you know, I, thank you to every student, family, adult in our buildings, all of our, uh, everybody that, that puts their heart and soul into our district. I see you and I appreciate you and I hope you have a wonderful break and get some time to enjoy and unwind and, uh, start the new year fresh. So thank you to everybody.
Mr. Gundy?
Um, first of all, I want to wish all of you and your families a Merry Christmas and hope you enjoy your time off and have a good rest and be prepared when school comes back and you come back in January. Secondly, I would like to thank Dr. Newman and this board for your support in supporting me to get to the level of president-elect of the South Carolina School Board Association. Now, the reason I bring that up is because Donington County has not had a president of the association since 1974, 75, when Ed Hershey was, uh, president. They've only had two in the history of the association. So that in itself, I think, is an accomplishment. Next, I want to thank, I want to congratulate Corey Lewis as well because I think Corey has done well and I do also want to wish him a speedy recovery, but his health. The next thing that I wanted to do is mention the fact that, I don't know if Dr. Newman was aware of it or not, but our fraternity chapter fed the faculty, staff, uh, personnel at Hart School Middle School, uh, back in November, just before Thanksgiving. Uh, and we also agreed and have started mentoring program with them because they said that they needed mentors for many of the male students at the middle school. And with that, that's it.
Um, Mr. Jeffords isn't here, so, Mr. Miller, you're not off the hook. How are vacancies looking? Poor one, that's what the world would ask if you were here.
Uh, 17 right now. So it's heading into hiring season. We're already hearing from some winter graduates who are putting out applicant, applications and got some interviews set up, so 17.
And I know we don't always call it all our retirees, but I do want to have to mention Ms. Melahani, who's gonna be retired because she has, um, graciously keeps us on the treadmill from her delicious meals and if she's got some free time and she wants to, you know, send us some cinnamon rolls, we, we, we won't turn those down. You may have retired from the school district, but the cinnamon rolls, um, just toss some of that out there, Dr. Newman. Um, anyway, also, I stopped by the maintenance department. They had their Christmas party this week and, um, as I told them, I said, sometimes, you know, we all get wrapped up in education and the education numbers and, you know, we sometimes forget that they're the backbone that keeps our schools open and keeps us, keeps us going. So, um, appreciated everything that they did and they had a wonderful Christmas party. There was some delicious food, so I appreciated all that. Thank you all for all of our treats and gifts. That was very thoughtful and the timing is just perfect. So I hope everyone has just a wonderful break. It's been a hard, you know, start back and I think this is kind of our first real, regular post-COVID and, um, it's kind of good to have things back to normal. And so we're very thankful for that, very thankful for you guys. So appreciate all of that. That's all I've got to say. So without any further ado, we'll move on to our personnel actions. Can I get a motion to approve our personnel actions?
Madam Chair, I make a motion we approve all personnel actions.
I get a second.
Second.
All in favor? And opposed? It passes. And it looks like we have a need for an executive session. Can we get a motion here?
I'll make a motion, um, Madam Chairman, that we enter into executive session to discuss personnel matters, contractual matters, and legal advice.
Can I get a second?
Second.
All in favor?
No.
All right, we'll move into executive session. We'll move into executive session.
I have a motion from Mr. Govan with a second from Mr. Reed. Come out of executive session. I'll entertain any motions related to executive session material.
Chairman, I have two motions I'd like to bring to the board.
Okay.
My first one is that I move that we uphold the administration's recommendation that the board make a formal complaint to the State Board of Education requesting the appropriate action be taken against a professional employee of the district who breached his or her employment contract with the district.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Do you have a second motion?
Yep. I move that we accept and agree to the terms presented to us in executive session in the ground lease agreement document and the use and management agreement for Blue Street Athletic Complex document. These are agreements we will enter into with the city attorney.
Do I have a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And that carries. Can we have a motion to adjourn?
I move it adjourned. I'll say.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.